Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting. It is December 22, 2014. Please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the board. Tom Jacobs to my far left, Michael Keane.
Good evening.
Vice Chair Sharon Brush. I'm Chair Greg Van Houten.
This is Jim Carroll. Justin Corcoran, sorry, Justin. Far right, John McFadden.
Our town manager Stu Herd. And Linda Bermude is recording. We meet on the second and fourth Monday of each month unless there's a special circumstance. It's the third-floor meeting room of the River Street Firehouse. Our first order of business would be minutes from December 8. We had just one absentee. We have a motion to approve those.
I hope they'd be approved as printed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Had a six in favor, one absent. Jim was absent. All right. Any questions on the warrants, Tom?
No, I haven't got any to see.
Michael?
Thank you.
Nothing material, thanks.
Sharon?
I do, I have one on the last page. I think it's the last page.
There's a lot of pages.
There is a lot of pages. It's page 11 of 13, the very top one. Is that a new truck that we're buying? Viking Kyves, USA?
It's being paid for out of grant funds. It's a highway, truck body and hydraulics flow. It's part of the borrowing. They actually built the dump truck that we're buying. So the total there is $65, $650, and it's paid for with borrowed funds. We borrow from the Highway Equipment Fund of the State of Vermont.
So is that going to be put on one of our frames?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all. I've never seen that before.
Jim, do you have any?
Nothing.
Justin?
I don't.
John?
All clear.
Oh, my questions are all answered. That's warrants for today. We have citizens. Just to be clear, there was a misprint in the paper. We have several things on the agenda tonight. One of them is a presentation from the Oral Health Committee. This is not a public hearing, as was indicated. If someone has a statement or a question for them, that's fine at citizens. But this is a presentation, going to be a presentation based on a committee that came out of the VCRD meetings two and a half years ago and was identified as a priority for the community. So that's where that presentation is. It hasn't been made yet, so there was nothing to make a public hearing about. If that transpires, we may do something about that in the future. Anyone who'd like to address the board, please come to one of the microphones. Introduce yourself, please, and make your statement. Thank you.
Mary?
Yes.
I'm Mary Lou Albert, and I'm from Bennington. Our group is here tonight to speak against the proposal to fluoridate the public water supply of Bennington.
Could we have a point of order, Ms. Chairman? You know, citizens' comments are great for things that are not on the agenda, but I don't think it's really appropriate to have questions in a dialogue at this point. When there's a presentation made, I think that's good, but we're wasting a lot of valuable time before the matter even gets before us.
Well, my question was going to be, what is the group?
Well, we really don't have a name. We haven't been meeting very long. We've sort of like blindsided.
Well, what are you basing your response on? I guess is my question.
Well, the proposal that they're going to fluoridate the Bennington Water Supply.
That they're gonna make.
And they named us. They named us. We're the anti-fluoridationists, if you want to name it.
The proposal is going to be made after citizens. So what I'm suggesting is we listen to what their basis of their proposal is.
And then you want us to talk after?
And you can make your statement if you want. I just want to make it clear, we haven't had a proposal yet. We haven't officially, we haven't had a presentation yet. So it's one of the reasons we haven't had a public, declared a public hearing.
So after they make their proposal this evening?
Well, they're gonna make their proposal, their presentation, their proposal, the board will discuss it, and then we'll see where it goes from there. That's what we're talking about.
And then we're going to have the ability to talk this evening?
Not this evening, no.
No, and so then, then you're going to devote, decide whether they're going to be allowed to be on the ballot, and then it will be up for a petition? And then they can have it on the ballot?
If they petition, if they have the signature petition, there's no need for a select board motion to put it on the ballot. That would be all that would be needed, to put it on the ballot.
I see. So the petition that they've been getting already, which are already ahead of us, what we're saying is we're a little bit one step behind. We want to catch up to speed here. They're already, they're already ahead of us as about getting ready for a presentation. We haven't had time to collect a presentation.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, there's no point in making a presentation if, I'm not expecting you to have one.
I'm just talking as a citizen.
Yeah, this is, that's fine. I'm just saying there's, there's no reason to expect you would have a presentation because they haven't made their presentation yet.
But even when they do make their presentation tonight, we will be allowed to ask questions afterwards?
Not tonight. The agenda's just to fall tonight. We're not gonna, we'd be here amongst us.
Then I think I'm gonna continue with my, my thoughts.
But I could, I'd like to offer a suggestion. Tonight, we're hearing from the Oral Health Committee on a presentation. We're not voting, we're not going to take any, any action at all. We can't, that's under our policy. The next meeting that we have, we should have discussion, and you should be able to present your questions and concerns, so this board can have those in its entirety, rather than tonight. Because again, as the chairperson has suggested, you may ask questions that have no relevance, and you're not going to be able to get a real practical presentation. I understand where you're coming from, but it'd be probably helpful if we heard the presentation, give you the opportunity as an individual or group to respond to it before the board takes a vote on it.
Well, we did ask to be on the agenda tonight, and we're told that we couldn't be there. So the only way we could speak this evening would be as under citizens. That's what we were told.
Well.
So that's why we're here, in that venue.
Right. Well, you're speaking, you're speaking as a group to make a presentation, you're not speaking as a citizen. You're representing a group, correct?
I'm speaking as a citizen. Okay? Personally.
Yeah.
And there are other citizens here that want to speak also.
And that's fine. I just want to let you know that we don't have a presentation in front of us or a proposal yet to discuss, so that's why there's no point.
But then, nothing will be decided this evening?
Correct.
Nothing will be put into a petition? Nothing will be put?
Nothing will be put to a vote this evening.
The board is not going to vote?
Right. We, as policy, we don't, we don't act on presentations or requests at the meeting where they're requested, so that we have time to research and get public comment and look into things like that.
Okay.
So that we, you know, just for that reason. Because, I mean, there are people, I've told people that it's not a public hearing. There are maybe people here that would want to speak at a public hearing, should we have one. You know, it's a big subject. The water system is a big subject. It's not something I, you know, I want to decide on in an afternoon. So, you know, what I envision is perhaps we have a special meeting, you know, just on that topic, or a forum of some sort.
Because I want to understand, if it's going to go on the ballot in March, you have to have it out there the next meeting?
We would have to be warned by the end of January for a ballot article, is that correct?
I thought it's 60 days?
That's correct, yes. No, it'd be 30 to warn an article. So we'd have to warn at the same time we warn the budget.
Okay, so we, okay.
Basically, I would say.
I want to get on the agenda, but I.
Yeah, so there's, there's time to discuss it. And, you know, and it's, and I think this is good. I mean, people's, we want people's attention. You know, we want people to discuss it, we want to vet it, you know, and get it out there. So we're not trying to sneak it in.
So I'm gonna continue, though, with what I want to say this evening, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Our group, our group or myself is here tonight to speak against the proposal to fluoridate the Bennington Water Supply. The reason why I feel compelled to protest this plan is because I've had personal adverse experiences with fluoride. I have four children, and 75% of them took prescribed fluoride vitamins, and 25% did not. The same 75% had delayed tooth eruption. This means that their baby teeth came in very late. Then as teenagers, they had to have extensive dental work, surgery, and orthodontic work. This caused our children a lot of pain, and our young family a lot of money. I refuse to give our last child fluoride vitamins. His teeth came in on time, he had fewer cavities, and he didn't eat orthodontic work. This is why I'm here. Water fluoridation is not a no-brainer. Some communities, communities thought it was a no-brainer, so they put it in their water, but then they turned around and took it out. Calgary, British Columbia, thought it was a no-brainer. They put it in, and they took it out. Davis, California, Morgan, California, put it in their water supply, and they took it Grand Island, Nebraska, Cumberland, Maryland, put it in their water supplies, and they took it out. Western Neosaw County, New York, Plainfield, Vermont, put it in their water, and in 2009, Plainfield took it out. And Rutland, Vermont, is very close to having it taken out. There are many other communities that debated issues like we're doing in here, and they decided that it wasn't a thing they wanted to do. So they didn't put it in. So they don't have to take it out. Now, I have a few rhetorical questions that I was thinking about in my head. Did anyone look at who was supplying this fluoride? How will citizens that do not want fluoride in their water be compensated for their freedom of choice being taken away? And if fluoride is a mistake, how will the town pay for the lawsuits? Will the town forgive or adjust water bills to those people that don't want or are allergic to fluoride? These are just a few questions that need to be asked. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
My name is Matthew Starkey-Cruiter.
Do we have balance?
No, we're not having. This is, this is not a debate. These are public, these are citizens' statements.
I'd just like to say.
Go ahead.
I'll make this fairly quick. Chronic ingestion of fluoride, even at low doses, leads to increased uptake of aluminum into the brain, which causes Alzheimer's. You look at the 1998 study by Varner, which is done at University of Binghamton in association with EPA. You read that study. The cerebrovascular structure of the brain changes in the sodium fluoride group at 2.1 parts per million was strikingly similar to that of Alzheimer's patients. This is, this is serious. This isn't like, you know, and the ADA doesn't dismiss the science, but on their website, as far as questions about Alzheimer's, they say, oh, well, it doesn't chelate aluminum from your pots. That's not the issue. The issue is that the aluminum that you have in your body is getting taken to your brain in increased amounts. And that's all I have to say about this.
Thank you. Step forward, please. Identify yourself for us, please.
My name's Dick Bauer. I'm a resident of Bennington. I have a statement to make. As our community deliberates fluoridation of its water supply, I think it would be unconscionable for us to ignore the positive and supportive endorsements of fluoridation by at least 106 professional governmental and research organizations. A short list of 100, these 106 include the American Academy of Physicians, the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry, the American College of Dentists, American Dental Hygienic Association, the American Medical Association, the American Nurses Association, the American Pharmaceutical Association, the American Society for Clinical Nutrition, the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, the Delta Dental Plans, the March of Dimes, the National Council Against Dental Fraud, National Head Start Association, the U.S. Public Health Service and Centers for Disease Control, and the World Health Organization, all endorse fluoridation. And I would like to conclude with a brief statement from the Surgeon General of the United States. Quote, "A significant advantage of water fluoridation is that residents of a community can enjoy its protective benefit at home, work, or play simply by drinking fluorinated water or beverages and foods prepared with it. Water fluoridation is the single most effective public health measure to prevent tooth decay and improve oral health over the lifetime of both children and adults. While we can be pleased with that, that has already been accomplished, it is clear that there is much yet to be done. Policymakers, community leaders, private industry, health professionals in the media, and the public should affirm that oral health is essential to general health and well-being, and take action to make ourselves and our communities healthier. I join previous Surgeon Generals in acknowledging the continued public health role of our community water fluoridation and enhancing the oral health of all Americans. Richard Kamona, United States Surgeon General." Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Connor Bowen. I'm a resident of Bennington. I'd just like to say that I think it's very important, what sources we turn to, to inform our decisions on whether or not this would be beneficial to our community. I think there's a lot of emotional and anecdotal evidence against the use of fluoride, but on the other hand, there's a vast majority of scientific evidence in favor of the health benefits of fluoride. And these are the institutions that we should be turning to, institutions that Mr. Bauer just listed off. Accredited universities, government agencies, prestigious hospitals. I think the consensus of the scientific community is overwhelmingly in favor of the health benefits of fluoride in our water system. And the great thing about science is that it's true whether or not you choose to believe in it. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Wright. I'm resident Bennington. I'm here on the amendments to the Encore Solar Project. Will the public be able to be heard during or after the presentation tonight, or will there be a presentation?
There's not a presentation. It's just a follow-up discussion on what we had at the last meeting.
Will those hear?
If you have a statement to make, I would make it now, if a question that you would like us to address at that point.
Actually, some of my questions may be answered during that, but I may have some other ones, so, like we did two weeks ago, would we be able to ask questions or make comments?
I'm trying to keep it moving tonight because we have so much on the agenda.
Well, if I don't do it now, I can do it, don't I?
But if there's something specific that you want to make sure it's addressed, we can see, or we can, again, address you the town staff, you know, for specifics on it. I mean, we're just basically following up on last week's questions.
Well, we'll see how it goes, but I'll just bring up some stuff now. There was a lot of questions by the board and the public that I don't think were answered during the presentation the last time. A couple of the things that I want to know a little more about on the water line. Was the water line project put out the bid yet?
No, it's been estimated.
Okay. And so that answers my next question. Is there any reason why you couldn't put the bid out now?
We haven't decided to do it.
Okay.
You can't put public bids out unless you have the money allocated and you're ready to do it.
Is there anywhere in the lease that the public access is going to be guaranteed to that property after Encore starts to lease it?
You're talking about to the river?
To the, on that property that's Park and Water Resources access.
The, I don't believe the development affects the river access.
The solar park will be fenced.
Right.
And secured.
You're talking about access to the, to the panels themselves, or?
No, just access to that land. A lot of people take that route to go up and across the bridge into Woodford from Barney Road.
Right.
And I was just wondering if those, the public can be able to have access to that.
Oh, you mean like a shortcut? I don't know that. Would that be, that'll be restricted?
No, you can still be.
You can still be able to do that?
Okay. Question on the decommissioning. There's no cash bond required for this, or the town isn't requiring cash bond?
That would be, the state would generally cover that in their contract, in the decommissioning from the papers I've read.
That would be an issue for the public service programs.
Right. And from what I understand, from a certain size under, they don't require a bond, and this fits in that.
Was it addressed in the, in the contract or the agreement with the party?
It was, it's addressed that they required to cover the, the bond, they require the decommissioning. If for some reason they were to default as a corporation, we would take over ownership of the, of the equipment, and which would cover this, what they're saying is the scrap on a project that size would cover the decommissioning if it came to that.
Okay. That's another problem I've got with this. I don't think the PSB allows the scrap to be part of the decommissioning. So, and they don't require a bond on a smaller plant like this one is going to be? So what I, what I was wondering, why the town didn't put it in the agreement to have a bond so that the taxpayers are protected against any cost for decommissioning when this is going to be down? Some of the materials in this are worth money, some you have to pay money to get rid of. So if, we don't know what that number is, we don't know if the taxpayers may be liable for some of that. So I had a question, I read the agreement, and I couldn't see in there where we require a cash bond.
Correct.
So to protect the taxpayers and us, maybe, I don't know, did the lawyers look at this agreement?
Oh, yeah, they'll look at it.
Okay. Has there been a new agreement drawn up?
This is just an amendment to the original agreement, so.
Okay, so how's that going to be put in? Is the contract going to be redrawn and re-signed, or?
Yeah, well, the amendment would have to be re-signed anyway to validate the contract.
Okay, so we've got a chance to add our own stuff to it?
We have an opportunity to look at that, yeah.
Okay, that would be something to look at, because that could be a substantial amount of money that taxpayers may be liable for. And there was some question as to who actually signed this contract. Who was this a contract with?
As far.
Between the town of Bennington and who?
It's Encore Redevelopment.
So is it, but they didn't sign that contract?
They signed the original contract, yes.
The one I read was by Infinity or somebody else, an LLC. It wasn't with Encore.
Well, the individuals that signed the contract are with Encore. Infinity is their finance backing, and I'm looking out into the audience to Dan, and I'm hoping.
They're partners.
They're partners. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, so they're all part of the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And over here, someone? Okay. Are you, are you going to speak? I'm sorry, go right ahead, please.
Nan Lowry, and I'm a resident of North Bennington. I just want to speak to the issue of the fluoridation of the water, and I am for it. I just want to speak about, a little bit about my experience. I'm not going to be quoting any statistics or anything, but growing up in the 50s and 60s, I lived in a town where there was no fluoride in the water. And as a child, starting at age five, I spent many hours making trips to dentists to have fillings, along with all my other friends who are also doing the same thing. We were just getting cavities left and right. And by contrast, when we moved to a different town, when we got married and had children, my kids now at ages 31 and 33, between the two of them, have one cavity. So I am all for fluoride and the health benefits and the savings that come with not having to pay your local dentist, you know, more than you should, than, you know, I'm all for the twice-a-year cleanings. Anyway, that's all, just a long story.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ann.
Hi, I'm Abby Shapiro, and I am a water rate payer in Bennington, and I'm going to let many, many people talk about the health benefits. I'm completely opposed to this, but I'm also going to point out something. Once again, this is the water rate payers, the people on municipal water who are going to be paying for this. And we are going to be paying for this benefit to, remember, this is a rural community. Probably, they're approximately, and again, please, this, these are loose numbers, but I think they're fairly accurate. The grand list is roughly about 6,000. The water rate payers are roughly about 4,000. 2,000 of those are meter users, which means a good percentage of those are businesses. So first of all, there's 2,000 homeowner, residences, because probably most of the people who are not on municipal water are residences and not businesses. So at least 2,000 residences will not be receiving this water, and lucky for them. We rate payers are going to be paying for it. We're going to have to have it in our water. I don't think the rate payers are really up for paying much more right now. This bond is kind of sitting on our shoulders. There's a lot involved in this. It's a hazmat, which should give you a few clues about why people wouldn't want to ingest it. And so I think that it is the responsibility of you all as the water board to think really carefully about what you're doing to the rate payers, should you think this is a good idea, and the limited benefit, should one believe that this is a benefit, which I don't, to only a portion of the households. It's not, it's not a cure-all. Some of us would say that it is a carcinogen. It causes bone weakness in elderly people, bone cancer, males, and there's a difference between ingesting it and rinsing, and it's huge. And if you look on the back of the toothpaste, it says, "Don't let children swallow it." So that says to me, "Don't put it in infant formulas." And then we go back to, it's the rate payers who are picking up the tab on all of this. And we don't want to. We don't want to pay any more money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I allowed?
Well, I was, you, your presentation is next. So.
I would just say two sentences. One is that we are not involved in who would pay, we, the coalition, are not involved in who would pay for the fluoridation of the water system. That would be a town decision. The second thing is that some of the speakers have made false claims about fluoride being toxic, such as causing bone cancer. There's no evidence of that at all, such as causing brittle bones. There's no evidence of that at all. So you have to, as Connor Bowen said, you have to be careful of your source of information.
Do we have any other citizens to speak? We're getting close to the end of time we have to. We'll just start over here to the right. Go ahead. I'm going to start over here.
Certainly.
Go ahead, ma'am.
With respect to all of our friends and neighbors in Bennington, my name is Grace Winslow. I am in North Bennington in Shafterbury, and I have a brief statement.
Could you speak up just a little bit? I'm having a hard time.
Brief statement. The ADA says that community water fluoridation is the single most effective public health measure to prevent tooth decay, and I just want to address the issue of public health. The premise of public health is that we do what is healthy for an entire community, and we don't decide what to do based on some fears, and I'm not saying that all of your concerns are fears, I'm saying that some of them are fears. And they're not backed by solid scientific evidence. A healthier population is why we have things like milk that's fortified with vitamin D, grains that are fortified with vitamins and minerals. Everybody gets them, everybody benefits. And by benefiting, I mean not getting diseases that are related to the absence of those minerals in the, in their diet. There are very few parts of our body that we would be okay with having infected to the point that they needed to be removed. Yet we kind of do accept that when it comes to our teeth. Decay is disease. Fluoridated water has a great, the great chance of having an impact on Bennington's, when you hear the presentation, benefits a fairly high rate of decay. Every taxpayer in the state pays the price for the dental decay. Everybody. And it's a public health problem that we all pay for. Natural fluoride is present in all of our water systems. Natural fluoride is present in all of our water systems. In Bennington, it is at 0.1 parts per million, but in other parts of the state, it is naturally occurring at pretty close to 0.7 parts per million, which is what we would want to be optimally fluoridating to. And here's one headline, one concept I'd like to just run by you, head lice. I work with children, I see a lot of head lice, not a lot, we see a little bit of head lice. They're relatively harmless. It's a social problem, it's not so much a disease problem. It only affects, affects a few children, but you would be really surprised and shocked at what some of our parents will do to avoid getting head lice or to take care of the head lice that they have. I'll tell you, if fluoride would prevent head lice, we'd all be clamoring for it. But that's not the case, unfortunately. It only prevents disease in a part of our body. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alex Tenentis. I use water here in Bennington, Vermont. I practice optometry on North Street. Been here for over three decades. Good evening to all of you. I applaud the individuals who are coming forward in favor of fluoridating the water supply for their passion and fervor in protecting the people of this town, wanting to help people. However, I respectfully disagree with their wanting to do this on the basis of it being healthy. I don't think it's a healthy choice. Fluoride, in opposition to one of the individuals who just got it before, is a toxin. It is now markedly noticeably absent from the PDR Physician's Desk Reference, which has OTC preparations in it. It's like a compendium of package inserts for drugs. Ear preparations, dermatologic preparations, ophthalmic preparations, you get all this information from the PDR. You cannot find any information about dental preparations in the PDR, which I find interesting. I have a copy of the 2014 PDR to bring in if you'd like the evidence. The one mention of fluoride is at the beginning of the PDR, on the page, "Dealing with Poison Etidotes," which shows you that calcium chloride and calcium gluconate, gluconate, excuse me, are used for fluoride salts. The example given is sodium fluoride, which of course is the crown prince of the fluoridation materials, using about 10% of the population's fluoridated water supplies. Most of them are actually using a different form, which is still a waste product, if you want to call it that, of some of the industries, especially the phosphate fertilizer industry, which means the scrubbings of the smoke stacks and what have you, all that stuff you hear about, all the horror stories. You're basically getting some materials out of besides that impurities. It turns out that I was raised in New York City, which has fluoridated water, and I kept going back and forth to the dentist to get many, 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 many caries filled. I have enough amalgam and metal in my mouth to become a radio. It turns out that I applaud the young lady for taking good care of her children, and they were probably brushing their teeth, which is probably one of the best ways to do the dental care thing. This is something you can get, since it's really hard to find in a PDR now, from any good pharmacist, which is a package insert information for sodium fluoride, which is the form that is prescribed. Since fluoride is, when ingested orally, a prescription drug, it's prescribed when you take it orally, not when you're applying it topically. At a higher concentration topically on teeth, yes, indeed, it will be prescribed as a specific type of dentifrice, dentistrice. Somebody mentioned earlier, this is indeed what you see on every tube of toothpaste. It says here, if an amount, if more than used for brushing is accidentally swallowed, get medical help or contact a poison control center right away. Okay? So, poison, toxin, the word is there. We don't want to be just skimming over it because so many people are in favor of putting this in the water. So, it still remains a toxin. This has not changed since the last time we addressed this issue about a dozen years ago, and it's still the toxin it was back in 1947 when we first started fluoridating municipal supplies. Turns out that in the printout here, it says, "Once absorbed, fluoride is distributed widely and stored in bones and teeth." Okay? It can be detected in all tissues and organs, but does not accumulate in non-calcified tissue. Now, this is the part that I find interesting. Skeletal tissue has a high capacity for storage of fluoride ions, and is responsible for maintaining a low concentration of fluoride in the rest of the body. And so, you're getting a lot of this into the bone, okay? Teeth represent a small repository of fluoride because of their relatively small mass. So, you're talking about when you fluoridate a, a water system, about taking something that is toxic at certain doses, putting it in the water system without a prescription, because now it's being ingested orally, when the prescription form is very close to what you get in a glass of water, about 0.2 milligrams in an ADAMs glass of water. When you fluoridate, you get approximately 1,100 to 1,400 parts per, per million, okay? So, you're looking at the dosage, you know, when you start cooking with this, you're taking orange juice concentrate in the morning for a little girl, making her orange juice, you're making her oatmeal because you don't have enough money to buy milk, okay? You can make Jell-O for her at lunch, you're using water. You're making reconstituted soup for her at lunch, you're cooking it in aluminum ware, aluminum cook, complexes with, with aluminum. Somebody just said that before. It, it has some impacts on the way mercury and lead interact in your body as well. There are issues, there are issues with this. We should be very, very careful about making sure we do not exceed dosage beyond a certain point. Now, there are different guidelines that people come up with, but I have to tell you, I wish I had more time, but many people want to talk. There are nations within the past decade that have decided to go non-fluoridate. The Belgian did it, Israel just did it not long ago. There are World Health Organization data that you can look at that will show you that there has been a worldwide decrease in dental caries in decayed, missing, or filled teeth over a period of time. And these are in non-fluoridated as well as fluoridated countries, okay? There is a big thing about this. In some countries, granted, we do some fluoridation of their salt, okay? But this is not an issue that is going to go away. It keeps coming up, and it keeps coming up. But I'm in eye care. Eye care, for the past decades, okay, numerous decades, has still only one approach to controlling glaucoma. You lower the IOP, the intraocular pressure of the individual. That's how you treat the patient. But at least eye care can stand up and say, "You know, the medications that we're using for this have been evolving. We've gone from adrenergics and, and cholinergics, we've gone through beta blockers. Now we're on the, the whole idea of using these prostaglandin analogs, which are very effective." But this is the only instance where we keep getting repeated pushes to put 1947 technology in 21st century consumed water. I'm not arguing that fluoride does not reduce dental caries. It's extremely effective. But the quality of the evidence is that it's much more effective when topically applied. The quality of the research that shows that it works is better for that. The classification for that which is not topically applied is not as good. I'm going to yield to the next person.
I appreciate it, thank you. We're, we're going to take one more, and then we're going to move to the presentation so we can see what we've all been talking about. Thank you.
My name's Robert Ebert, I live here in Bennington. I'm not really sure how select boards work, but if there's any way for you to take a step back from the decision you made two weeks ago to cut the penalty for delinquent tax payments in half, I wish you would take that step back. I think that issue needs more deliberation than it's been given. If I understood the town manager correctly, cutting that penalty in half is taking $75,000 out of the town budget, and I think you need to give it more thought than you've given it. Thank you.
It was actually, the estimate would be $50,000 on the high side, I think, and that would have to go to a town vote. That was, the, the decision was to put it to a town vote.
In all due respect, none of you knew that until the very end, when the town manager told you that. You had made your decisions about whether it was a good thing to do or not before the town manager brought that point up. $75,000, $50,000, I think it's extremely irresponsible of you to pull that kind of money out of our town budget with no kind of planning. All I ask, if there's a way for you to talk about it a little more, I think you should do.
To correct you, we did discuss that line item during, during the conversation, but thank you, Mr. Ebert. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to the Oral Health Committee presentation, and just to give background for people who don't recall, two and a half years ago, we had the Vermont Committee on Rural Development Community Meetings here. There were four priorities with a bunch of sub, sub-priorities. The oral health issue was considered a vital issue at the time. We've had a committee of volunteers working on that for the last two and a half years. They have asked to make a presentation, and I'm going to introduce them now to do that. Charlie, you're going to lead, Charlie Gingo. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Gingo. I live here in Bennington, and among the hats that I wear, I'm a member of the Bennington Oral Health Coalition, and I also chair the Local Poverty Work Group that Greg is referencing. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you this evening. In the next 20 minutes or so, you're going to hear several of us talk about very specific kinds of things. I'm going to do a little background about how we came to be. Mary Lou Chakoti, who is a dental hygienist, is going to give you some statistical information about the, it's really disturbing condition of children's teeth in Bennington. Dr. Rob Colley is a local dentist, and Rob moved here recently to open a dental practice, and he's going to talk about some of the science and the facts about fluoride. Dr. Carol Conroy is the chief nursing officer at the Southwestern Vermont Medical Center, and Dr. Conroy is going to touch on the emergency room and the operating room patients that come through the hospital with dental issues. And we're going to finish with some comments from Sue Andrews. Sue is the executive director of Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, also called GBICS. GBICS runs the Food and Fuel Program, the Bennington Free Clinic, the Kitchen Cupboard over on Gate Street, among other programs. So, these are the folks who are going to do short presentations for you this evening. Greg just did a very good and very brief summary. About three years ago now, the town of Bennington, under the leadership of then-select board chair Joe Krosick, called together about 20 community leaders to look at, to identify really, issues, concerns that affect the citizens in Bennington. All of this was in preparation for the series of community meetings that took place in March, April, and May of 2012, that was sponsored by the Vermont Council on Rural Development. One of the major issues that was identified, as the chair said, was poverty in Bennington. In March, April, and May, over 400 Bennington residents participated in these community meetings. And what was very interesting to me, I participated too, was that the poverty group consistently had the largest number of people coming to their sessions. Consistently during the brainstorming session that took place in March of that year, then the priority-setting session that took place in April, and then the task force-setting session that took place in May, Bennington residents consistently identified better dental health for the children who live here, for the teens who live here, and for the adults who live here. And to me, this is an incredibly powerful statement about the public good. What do we need to do for the people who live here? The Poverty Work Group came out of this three-month series of meetings, and the Poverty Work Group continues to meet. We're still doing our work. One of the five subcommittees of the Poverty Work Group started out as the Dental Subcommittee, and that Subcommittee has evolved into the Bennington Oral Health Coalition. The Oral Health Coalition realized early on that the initial steps that we were looking at to address and improve the oral health of all of Bennington's children and the adults here, that we really needed to move away from treating the problem of dental pain and suffering. We needed to move away from pulling teeth at the annual free dental day, and we need to move away from children, children going to the OR here in Bennington to have teeth pulled. It had to do something about preventing the problem that leads to childhood cavities and tooth loss, and adult tooth loss, and all of the suffering that comes with dental pain. And that something is to fluoridate the Bennington water system. As you've heard several times, it's the single most effective public health measure that a community can take to change the problem of dental issues in a particular community. We as a community can make this happen with your leadership and support. And we all know, life is better with teeth. I'm going to turn the floor over to Mary Lou Chakoti, the dental hygienist, who's going to, again, give you some quick statistics about Bennington oral health of its children. Thank you.
And thank you, everybody. I want to say that I come from the front line. I work in a dental office. I have in the past worked with Meg Outorder in the schools, and I have worked with Dr. Brady in the OR. I have seen firsthand what it's like to see a child or an adult cry because they need dental care that they can't afford. They need work done that they can't get done. We have many patients that we cannot get to completion with their dental care because Medicaid funds, their own personal funds, or their dental insurance runs out, it disappears. And I'm serious when I say I have patients who cry in the dental chair because they cannot get the fixing, the dental needs taken care of that they need. In 2014, this past year, the State Department for Oral Health Access did a survey, and they surveyed around 27 schools. Out of those 27 schools, two Bennington schools, and one was Shasbury, or two Bennington schools and also Shasbury, but we're not talking about Shasbury right now. The two Bennington schools were about the highest in rates of decay, children that had had decay, whether they had it fixed or not, but also the highest rates of the, what they call the unmet need, that is open lesions, open decayed lesions in their mouth that were not taken care of. The state average for the unmet need was about 12%. Bennington was more than twice that. In the rate of decay, the Bennington schools had over 50% of the students surveyed needed dental care. Now, you may have noticed that the people in this group, what we're talking about is the public good, the general good. We are not talking about I, or me, or mine. We are talking about what needs to be done for the people. There is a lot of research out there that Dr. Colley is going to talk about. Find out the facts. Find out what studies come from what groups, and you'll find out what is really the truth. It, some other statistics too. The Bennington Free Day, there was a, they call it the Free Dental Day. The Free Dental Day costs taxpayers over $112,000. 132 individuals were seen at an average of $850 worth of dental care each. The time was donated by dentists, they were volunteers, but it was still over $100,000 in taxpayers' money. One dental office alone gave, just one dental office gave me these statistics. In the past year, they have seen 837 Medicaid patients. They had extractions that were paid by Medicaid, by taxpayers' money, at an average cost of $600 per patient. So, when we're talking about saving money, saving taxpayers' money can come with better dental health. And also, it's not just people on Medicaid. There are people out there with dental insurances. Dental insurances don't pay 100% of all your dental needs. There are the middle-class people that don't have dental insurance, that can't go to dentists because they have no dental coverage. So, there really is a need. And the last thing I'm going to mention is that there are fluoridated areas. My hometown has been fluoridated since I was in hygiene school, which is back in the 70s. And. And, you know, you look at their studies on health and some of the things we've heard, and, you know, it really doesn't relate to these fluoridated areas. Look at Burlington. So, thank you, and it's time for Rob Colley.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Dr. Robert Colley. I'm actually a Bennington native. I grew up here. I went to kindergarten here, high school here. You know, one of the reasons I decided to come back to Vermont to practice is because I grew up in this community, a non-fluoridated community. I remember growing up, having dental issues. I remember my parents having to take time off to drive to Rutland to go to the pediatric dentist there, who, you know, is going to retire soon. I always wanted to help try to prevent what I went through as a kid. After high school, I went to school in Boston. I have an advanced degree in biomedical science from Boston University School of Medicine and my DMD degree from Boston University as well. I'm just going to talk about what fluoride is, how it works, and what it does. So fluoride is a naturally occurring compound that can help prevent dental decay. Fluoride ion comes from the element fluorine. Fluoride compounds are components of minerals and rocks in the soil. In nature, water passes over these rocks, dissolves the fluoride compounds that are present, releasing the ion. The result is that a small amount of fluoride are present in all water sources. All water sources, such as lakes, rivers, streams, they all have different levels of fluoride, but they all contain some concentration. The concentration of fluoride in groundwater varies to such factors as the depth at which the water is found, and the quantity of fluoride-bearing minerals in the area. In the United States, natural levels of fluoride in groundwater vary between very low levels to point, or to four parts per million. Fluoride levels in the ocean range from 1.2 to 1.4 parts per million. Fluoride is naturally present, to some extent, in all foods and beverages, and the concentrations vary widely. So, what is water fluoridation? Community water fluoridation is just the adjustment of the natural fluoride concentrations in water up to the level recommended for optimal dental health. This is a range 0.7 to 1.2 parts per million. Optimal levels of fluoride may be present in the water naturally, or can be adjusted. So, 1 mg per liter of fluoride in water is identical to 1 part per million. At 1 part per million, 1 part of fluoride is diluted into a million parts of water. Large numbers, such as millions, can be very difficult to understand, visualize. While not exact, here's some kind of comparisons that can help you comprehend how much fluoride's in water, our community water fluoridation. So it's like 1 inch in 16 miles, 1 minute in 2 years, 1 cent in $10,000. So you're looking in, when you're talking about water fluoridation, you're looking in that 1 part per million range. Things like toothpaste is a couple, or 2,000 parts per million. It's a lot difference. So how does fluoride protect the teeth? Fluoride protects the teeth in two ways, either systemically or topically. During tooth formation, ingested fluorides become incorporated into the tooth surface. Fluorides ingested regularly during that time, when teeth are developing, are deposited throughout the entire tooth surface and provide long-lasting systemic fluoride. Can also give topical protection because ingested fluoride is present in the saliva, which continuously bathes the teeth, providing a reservoir of fluoride that can be incorporated into the tooth surface to prevent decay. Fluoride becomes incorporated into the dental plaque and facilitates further remineralization. While it was originally believed that fluoride's actions are exclusively systemic or pre-eruptive, by the mid-1950s, there was growing evidence of both systemic and topical benefits of fluoride exposure. The maximum reduction in dental decay is achieved when fluoride is available pre-eruptively for incorporation during all stages of tooth formation and post-eruptively at the tooth surface. Water fluoridation provides both types of exposure. So now, you kind of understand that fluoride's all around us. You may be wondering if there's a difference in effectiveness between naturally occurring fluoridated water at optimal levels and water that has fluoride added to reach the optimal level. So, you know, you hear different sources of where the fluoride's coming on, coming from, but it's really just the ion that fluoride is present in the water as ions or electrically charged atoms. So these ions are the same weather acquired by water, as it seeps through the rocks and sand, or added to the water supply under carefully controlled conditions. When fluoride's added under controlled conditions to fluoride-deficient water, the dental benefits are the same as those observed from naturally fluoridated water. So some individuals use the term kind of artificial fluoridation to imply that the process of water fluoridation is unnatural, and that it delivers a foreign substance into the water supply, when in fact, all water sources really contain some sort of, some concentration of fluoride. Community water fluoridation's a natural way to improve oral health. So does fluoride water harm the environment? That's always kind of a big subject as well. So scientific evidence supports that fluoridation of public water supplies is safe for the environment and beneficial for people. The EPA, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, has set an enforceable federal drinking water standard of fluoride at 4mg/L. Under a few studies, but under the Washington State Environmental Protection Act, a study concluded that there are no significant adverse environmental impacts to water fluoridation. Under SEPT, a study was conducted to investigate the environmental consequences of adding optimal levels of fluoride to drinking water. Knowing that the amount of fluoride in the water does not reach the levels that are harmful to plants or animals, the SEPT study concluded that there is no probable significant adverse environmental impacts. There's no evidence that optimally fluoridated water has any effects on gardens, lawns, or plants. There's overwhelming evidence that exists to prove the effectiveness of water fluoridation. Water fluoridation is a very effective method for preventing dental decay for children, adolescents, and adults. Is safe and effective. It's been proven for a really long time. You know, since I've come back here to practice, I practiced in, or in Boston for a while. I grew up here. This is where I'm from. The difference in health between the two communities is totally different. You know, controlling for socioeconomic factors, I see kids that are on their way to dentures here where I wouldn't see that somewhere else. So it's kind of depressing to practice here, I feel like. I don't know, I've never really seen anything like it. So, you know, I grew up here. I have a lot of dental work done on myself because of this, and I see a lot of problems that could be solved by water fluoridation. You know, Bennington's not at the cutting edge of anything. There's 300-something million people in the country. 200 million have access to fluoridated water. And I think almost 75% of communities in the country are fluoridated. So that's just something to think about. And I'll turn it over to Sue.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carol Conroy. I'm the chief nursing officer and vice president for operations at Southwestern Vermont Medical Center. I do not live in Bennington any longer, but as the clinical leader of the nursing team that takes care of the citizens of Bennington, I appreciate the opportunity to address the select board. I'd like to address three main points. The first is the effect of poor oral hygiene on the children of our community. The second is the ongoing effects that we see in the adults. And the third is the impact of the lack of fluoridation on the cost value of care. So our OR nurses tell me that they see patients who are as young as 2 years old, who have multiple cavities and require extensive fillings and extractions. In the year 2014, through our Bright Smiles program, we cared for 147 children, ages 2 to 11, in our operating room. For some of the older children, the advanced decay has already taken hold of permanent, not baby, but permanent teeth. This 147 children represents approximately 25 to 30 more children than we took care of in the two prior years. Even in the caring, capable hands of our OR staff, no visit to the operating room is pleasant for a child or its parent. Our ER nurses tell me that in the last three months, they have seen 95 patients come to the ED with a complaint of dental pain, inflammation, or pain associated with dental disorders. They are usually given pain medications, sometimes very strong ones, and antibiotics. But the underlying problem, the poor dental hygiene, has been longstanding for most of these patients, these adult patients, and cannot be addressed in an emergency room visit. Scientific researcher Griffin Adal, in 2001, conducted a research evaluation of community water fluoridation projects. Based on epidemiologic evidence, they projected that the reduction in the cost of restorative dental treatment exceeded the cost of fluoridation in communities of all sizes. That translates to about $1 worth of fluoridation eliminates $38 of dental spending. In addition, I just want to add that the goal of a healthcare organization such as SVHC is to provide the right care to the right patient in the right location by the right provider. A 2-year-old in the operating room for severe dental decay does not seem to be consistent with that goal. Neither does the adult patient forced to go to the ED for pain control of untreated advanced dental disease. So I respectfully suggest that the select board consider supporting the fluoridation of water in Bennington. Thank you.
My name is Sue Andrews, and I'm the executive director of Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, also known as GBIX. As Charlie mentioned earlier, GBIX runs a number of programs, which might be familiar to you. Basically, all our work is with people in and near poverty. So we run the Bennington Free Clinic for adults who have no health insurance. We run the Kitchen Cupboard Food Distribution Program on Gage Street, which is currently serving 1 in every 4 families in Bennington. And we run the Food and Fuel Fund, a discretionary fund that helps people with housing, housing supports, utilities, and other kinds of crises. In my work at GBIX, I see the burden of oral health, poor oral health, every single day. You've already heard from some of my colleagues that Bennington children are suffering from an extremely high incidence of oral disease. 2 of Bennington's elementary schools are in the top 4 schools in the state for poor oral health outcomes. 150 children per year have such badly infected teeth that they must be placed under anesthesia in an operating room at our medical center in order to deal with their health problems. That's approximately 1 child every other day who has to go through that kind of trauma. Dental disease in children comes at a cost. The children experience pain, making it difficult for them to eat and to concentrate in school. Taxpayers foot the bill for the extractions, and children have to go through the trauma of the extractions. Nor is this problem limited to kids. Bennington adults are also suffering from oral health disease. I would invite any of you to come over to a distribution of food at the Kitchen Cupboard at any time if you want to see young adults who are missing teeth, or young adults who have teeth that are so badly rotted that they go right down into their gum line. The economic costs of poor oral health are extraordinary, and I think we've heard a couple of the statistics that I was going to share already. At the last Free Dental Day in Bennington, 132 individuals received interventions for pain and suffering at a value of more than $112,000. In the first 6 months of 2014, 180 state dental vouchers were issued to people in Bennington at a cost of more than $22,000 to taxpayers. The dental vouchers were for the relief of pain and suffering for people who could not afford to see a dentist. And the only thing those vouchers pay for is tooth extraction, no treatment. The Free Clinic also has a dental program for our patients who do not have insurance. We budget $10,000 per year for the cost of our dental program. Altogether, these 3 initiatives, all of which are geared toward the elimination of pain and suffering, help approximately 300 adults in Bennington at a cost of about $160,000 per year. And you know what? What do we have to show for it? We get to see about 300 mouths with missing teeth because the treatment is to take the teeth out. This brings us to the social costs of poor oral health. Losing teeth in early adulthood is not normal, but many people in Bennington take it for granted. Employers are less likely to hire workers who have bad teeth. Employees who have bad teeth are more likely to be absent from work, resulting in reduced productivity. And bad teeth are related directly to other health conditions, including endocarditis, cardiovascular disease, premature birth, low birth weight, and others. The work of the Bennington Oral Health Coalition, as we've heard tonight, came out of the community visit process held in Bennington 3 years ago, at the direct invitation of the select board and coordinated by the Vermont Council on Rural Development. Of the more than 200 people who turned out for the initial day, the biggest turnout by far was for the Session on Poverty in Bennington. 40 people signed up that day to join the Poverty Working Group. Of the 40, 8 of us have worked for the past 2 and 1/2 years on the issue of improving dental health here in Bennington. We were charged with doing something about the deplorable state of oral health here in Bennington. Some said, "This will be easy. It's low-hanging fruit." We have found that, in actuality, it's a bottomless, expensive, and difficult problem. We've spent the past 2 and 1/2 years studying the problem and what to do about it. It's clear to us that relief of pain and suffering through Free Dental Days and vouchers does little to improve the overall oral health in Bennington. It's also clear that many children and adults cannot access regular dental care because they lack insurance or don't have cash. It's also clear that many children and adults cannot access regular dental care because there's not enough dentists. And finally, there's other people who cannot access regular dental care because there are not enough dentists who accept Medicaid. It's also clear to us that prevention of dental disease through brushing, flossing, and adjusting the level of fluoride in Bennington to the optimal level will provide us by far the biggest bang for the buck with respect to improving our oral health. The science of fluoridation is clear. There's an extensive body of peer-reviewed research that has been compiled over the past 60 years that provides scientific proof that fluoridation of community water systems is safe and effective. As the select board, it will be your responsibility to familiarize yourself with that research and to figure out how to differentiate it from research that is not peer-reviewed. The science of fluoridation is clear. Over 200 million people in the U.S. already live in communities that are fluoridated. Almost 60% of people in Vermont live in communities that are already fluoridated. The science of fluoridation is clear. Fluoridation of community water supply results in a 15% to 40% reduction in cavities within a generation. The science of fluoridation is clear. For every $1 spent on fluoridation, there's a $38 reduction in dental costs. The science of fluoridation is clear. Fluoridation of the Bennington water system is affordable and cost-effective at less than $1 per person on the system per year. And there's money available from the state to cover startup costs. The benefits of fluoridation are also clear to the medical and dental practitioners in our community who take care of our health. In September 2014, the medical staff at Southwest Vermont Medical Center voted unanimously to support fluoridation of Bennington's water system. Top SVHC administrators support fluoridation, and most of Bennington dentists support fluoridation. As the select board of Bennington, you have the opportunity to do something that will drastically improve oral health in this community. As the Board of Water Commissioners, in a representative democracy, you have the opportunity to reduce preventable dental disease in our children and our adults. The Bennington Oral Health Coalition comes before you tonight to ask that the town of Bennington act now to fluoridate its community water supply, and, if necessary, that this advisory question be placed on the ballot for the town meeting 2015. We, as a community, have an opportunity to do something which will We, as a community, have an opportunity to do something which will have a profound impact now and in the future. We can prevent cavities in generations to come. And Charlie was right, life is better with teeth. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much. Charlie, could you do me a favor? You guys are passing a petition with an advisory question that was just referred to. Can someone read that question, please? The one that you're proposing, just so folks know? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Kazazian, and as it reads, "Shall the town of Bennington improve the oral health of its citizens by adjusting the natural level of fluoride in the Bennington water system to a level recommended for preventing tooth decay?" Advisory only.
Thank you. I want to thank the volunteers that have been working on this for two and a half, 10, 12 years, in some cases that, you know, serve our community. Clearly, there are a lot of issues here. What I've been informed is, you know, 12 years ago, we had a committee to study on this from a Select Board level that I was not involved in, that never came out of committee. You know, we didn't have the tools and the research that we do now. I have personal feelings on it. That was based on philosophy and pretty much nothing else. I'm told that 12 years later, the situation as described here is at least as bad, if not worse, than it was 12 years ago. So we have a serious situation at hand. I'm going to open up the board for discussion, but what I'd like to do here is at least put in people's minds, if we're not going to add fluoride, what are we going to do? Because I don't want to look 12 years back and say, "We kicked it down the street. We went by that, and here we are again." Now, there's clearly a cultural issue to address besides the medical issue and the community water issue. You know, in the 23 years I've been here, I've noticed it. In some portions of our community, oral health is not a priority. We need to change that. So, you know, there are a lot of challenges here. Fluoride is the suggested remedy by our medical and scientific community that just spoke, and these volunteers. Obviously, not all medical and scientific folks are going to agree with that, but there are quite a few to do in quite a few agencies. So ergo, we're paying attention. We're listening. We have a big problem we want to talk about. So I'm going to open up to the board now, see if there are any further questions or any comments. Tom, start down here.
Thank you for the opportunity to hear both sides to point. I know there's a lot of passion, and I appreciate the articulate way both sides of the argument have shared their views, because this is an international discussion we're having at a local level, which I feel really proud that we're having that dialogue. My questions really deal with maybe technical things that I presently don't understand and may never understand. But as I understand, the good dentist, his reference that this is a natural, occurring situation, as I understand it, every town has some amount of fluoride naturally within its system. Have we had any examinations, testing done at a local level that Stuart, or Dan, or someone can share with us?
Well, we're at .01 parts per million is what the current...
Point one.
.11.
And where is that?
.11. Coming out of... Where is that listed? That's in...
Where is it? .01?
In our...
In what part of water?
Points per million in our community water system.
My understanding, and maybe somebody can correct me, is that if I have a private well or a hot private water source, my fluoride content could even be higher than that. Is that true?
That's correct. Yeah. And if you look at numbers around the world, you know, there's places where it's 45 point parts per million in naturally occurring water. It depends on what it goes through, when it comes out. You know, and as the CDC will tell you, anything's poison if you take enough of it, and fluoride certainly has a level that is considered poison, and that creates severe problems. So, yes, it does occur. We have a very low level around here compared to some places.
So what would be the steps to get it to the recommended level? Is that something that we've already done research that we have readily available, Stu?
Do you have information on that that we've...
I don't. Terry Morris provided me with some information today. I asked him to do some research of other systems throughout the state. I haven't had a chance to even review it, but generally, it's probably going to run in the realm of $10,000 to $15,000 a year to add sufficient fluoride to the system. I don't know at this time what the cost for any mechanicals that must be added to the system in order to make that happen.
Stuart, where did that number come from, the .11? What I just heard, is it... How often is that tested, and where can we see it?
Frankly, I don't know.
Okay. Maybe can we get some... Terry, provide that information to you.
You can go online.
Yeah. In the state consumer report, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. You can find it pretty much anywhere in the country.
Last time I read was 2013.
Okay.
And I think that number, most of the number, that's naturally around...
So that state testing, do you have any... Do you know at this point that state...
Well, we are required to test the system. I'm sure it's one of the required testing regimes that we have to do in order to report annually on the system itself.
What's the recommendation with it?
Just to add on to that, I have looked at the state engineering reports and recommendations for doing fluoridation. There's a lot of information on how you actually engineer doing this, and what happens if you have an overflow into... There are all kinds of regulations that are in place, and it will go into effect if you did have a problem with overdosing. And the history shows that they're very infrequent, like, are there overdoses of fluoride added to water, which is significant in health?
Which site were you looking at for that, sir?
It's the Vermont Department of Health site.
I was looking at Google, and I'm not sure where...
I looked at it, and it was Vermont Department of Health site.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is, you know, this is a good point. There's a lot of places to find information. Some are better than others. Like, I tell people, if you're looking for information, and it's from ihatefluoride.com or ilovefluoride.com, keep going. You know, there's a lot of scientific papers in there. And the beauty of this is now, I mean, none of us are scientists. You know, we're the Board of Health, we're the Water Department Board, we're, you know, and we're the Select Board, but none of us are scientists. But there's a lot of information out there that does not draw conclusions. It's scientific studies, it's numbers, it's statistics, and good data. There's going to be, you know, you can put two people equally educated from the same background, they can read the same papers and come up with two philosophical interpretations of it, and we're going to see that, a lot of that in the near future, as we often do.
Right. Let me recommend the American Cancer Society website on the causes of cancer. I'm not saying one way or another what's there. And the British National Research Council, that does studies on fluoride's benefits and effects almost every two years. There's really current stuff there.
Yeah. They're being looked at on a regular basis. There's a lot out there. So, oh, just to continue. So, Tom, are you... Do you have any more questions?
No, I want to defer to other folks.
Okay. Michael, did you have any questions?
I think I'd want to make one point in terms of, with all due respect to you, Mary Lou, the Calgary question was voted in 2011, and the reason for voting the way they did was to save $750,000 of expense to keep fluoridating the water. Calgary has not decided yet what it's going to do with that $750,000 to get fluoride to people, to its citizens. It realizes that. That vote may come up again. Same thing in Grand Island. The situation was that the city, which is only about, which is about 50,000-person city, so I don't know what it would correspond to in Vermont, decided not to incur the expense, which I think was about $75,000 or $80,000 to fluoridate its water, and hasn't decided anything. It didn't want to start it. It didn't want the expense. So in many communities, and one or two of you have brought that up, there's an expense issue. There should be ways around that if we decide to go that route.
Sharon?
I'm not going to make any comment right now. I think I'd like to read some of these studies and just kind of get up to speed on all of this stuff before I make any kind of a decision.
It's like going back to college.
I know. I'm sure it is. It's been a long time since I've been in college.
James?
I just have two questions. What is the recommended level for watering in town? And what's the toxicity level? Does anybody know that?
Yeah, well, the recommended levels are .7 to 1.2 in community water, parts per million. .07 or .1? .7. To 1.2. World Health Organization says 1.5 to keep it under. Toxic barriers on the studies, depends on what you're talking about. There's people that go from .2 to 2.0, 5.0. And what happens is you'll see, and, you know, I don't want to be spoiler here, but you'll see a list of hazards and warnings as those levels go up. But the .7 to 1.2 is generally the recommended level for a community water system. And that's been fairly well-agreed on by different...
How do you detect toxicity, besides, you know, somebody dying, you know, from being too toxic? What are...
Does any one of the dentists or somebody want to speak? I mean, I can tell you what I've read, but if somebody wants to, or Charlie, or somebody wants to speak to issues of fluorosis or anything like that...
I believe the state requires that a fluoridated system constantly monitors and electronically reads what's going out into the water system in terms of fluoride. If it exceeds something, it shuts down the system. I believe that will be engineering work.
The dangers of, you know, documented dangers in the papers is basically fluorosis. You have cosmetic fluorosis, all the way up to skeletal fluorosis. When you get into communities, you can read papers from UNICEF and the World Health Organization on India, Africa, and places that have very high levels of fluoride. You're talking about 35, 40 parts per million, where you can get skeletal deformities over time, things like that. So, you know, like any mineral, you know, there's levels that you have to be careful of. But the World Health Organization picks 5.0 as the safe zone underneath that. You know, it depends on what you read. Please, if you're going to add data, please step up to the mic so it's part of record.
I just wanted to add that the benefit of fluoride was first noticed in Colorado Springs. And Colorado Springs naturally occurring was starting at 8 parts per million and on up to 12 parts per million. And what they discovered was that people in Colorado did not get cavities, but they had dark teeth. So they took the fluoride out of the water after figuring it out. They took it out, and they found the teeth were no longer brown, but they got cavities. So they adjusted it to 1 part per million, where they found, you know, no brownness or fluorosis, and no decay. We've not... But they have adjusted the recommended rate down to .7 parts per million. To get any kind of toxic reaction from 7 tenths parts per million, you have to drink the bathtub full in three hours. If you can do that, you're going to get safe. And just one other slight thing is the toothpaste is 2% solution. That's 2,000 parts per million. So, community water adjustment fluoridation is the safest method because it is monitored by experts in their field who know what community water...
Exposure, sir, yeah. Colorado actually is kind of a hotspot if you want to read about it. Loveland, Colorado, actually just voted to increase their fluoridation level from, I believe, .9 to 1.2. Fort Collins did it about 20 years ago, so there's a lot of modern data there and information on that we want to read up. Justin, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't at this time. I just would, you know, thank everybody for all the work they've put into this, and we'll certainly take it into consideration and absolutely take your folks' opinion into consideration as we look to make a decision on this going forward. So, at this time, I don't have any comments.
John?
No real comments. I mean, over the last couple of weeks after this was brought up last meeting, I did a lot of research, which was validated by the presentations that were brought up today. So, a lot of, not redundant information, but things that are out there, like you said, by national organizations. I guess the only thing that I would like to see is the costs around this project and getting an understanding of what that would look like for our community. When we look at our national, the national level, we're moving towards healthcare systems where you might be paying for your neighbor. So, looking at these types of systems, that could help an entire community, I think, could be instrumental, and to get in on that could be a positive thing for Bennington.
Stu, could you also have somebody mention out there that there's state funding available for some of the setup costs and stuff for this? If we could look into that, too, and see what kind of money is available for that?
So maybe next time around, we could try and get an understanding of the scope of the project, and maybe a little more research. I don't know how we're going to do that, but that's what we're talking about right now. If it was a $5 bill, the answer's going to be one thing. If it's a $5 million bill, it's going to be another, so.
Go ahead.
I don't know if I can...
Yeah.
I have an email that I went forward to Stu. Would that be the appropriate person?
Sure.
With one of the chemists at the state level who laid out the startup costs. There are some questions about the engineering involved. This person was personally familiar with the water plant in Bennington and said that it's fairly congested, and there'd have to be some discussion about where the storage vessels would be and that kind of thing. But I can forward that. And the other thing is, is that the Vermont Department of Health Office of Oral Health does have startup money available, and we would be happy to help you pursue getting that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, one of the issues here we have is that the budgets are pretty much ready for presentation. Town meeting day's coming up quickly. If all seven Select Board members were all gung-ho and wanted to just go ahead and fluoridate, we don't have the numbers to put that into this year's budget anyway. So, you know, we wouldn't be able to act on it in time to get it into this year's budget, which activates, you know, is voted in March, and it activates in July. So, the request from the committee has been to put it to an advisory question on the ballot. My feeling, like I said, we're not scientists and whatnot, is that this is a community decision. This is something that, you know, should be decided as to what we're going to go, what our priorities are, and what we're going to do about oral health in our community. Are we comfortable with fluoridation? Are we not comfortable with fluoridation? So, if the petition gets enough signatures, it would go on. We could decide to put that on as a board, to put that on. So that we can discuss at the next meeting if we intend to put that on. Unless you have the signatures, then we don't even really need to talk about it. But I think between now and town meeting, what I'd like to do is figure out some way to have a community forum. Perhaps we can get one of the media partners in town to get together and get some representation on points and, you know, see where we're at with it. But it's a big question. We have some obvious problems to solve, and I appreciate the attention people are giving to it. And again, I appreciate the volunteers who've put this together. So, I'll look at some of the options to move forward and see where to go from here. Anybody else on the board? All right. Thank you. So, do you have a question?
What is the... You're talking about putting together a forum. And what's the next step? I mean, I know these people here have a presentation made.
Well, that would be a good opportunity for that, you know...
How do we get the opportunity? I mean, these folks here, they came there, and these local citizens, at the last meeting, and they asked to be put on the agenda.
Well, they came as the Bennington Oral Health Coalition, I mean, which was a designated committee by the town that was identified by the town at large. So that was the result of that. So now we're on the topic. So I think we go forward, and, you know, what I'd like to do is dedicate, you know, a discussion to that, and so people who have concerns and have researched, done their research and have concerns can present those items. I mean, you have a physician here who has a lap full of paper, you know, and, you know... Yeah, and I think it's important to hear those arguments, and for people who are, you know, going to make those decisions, they should hear those arguments. There's people who are very focused on this for a long time.
We can make it more interesting, if you're prepared.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So we should maybe put together a forum?
Yeah, I'll have to figure out what's the best way to do it, but I would say sometime after the holidays. The guy's probably a little busy this week. So I want to thank everybody for coming out on a holiday week. So I want to thank everybody for coming out on a holiday week and getting this done and we will, we'll publicize it and, and figure out what we're, what's the best way to put that forward, so. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna, we're gonna take a, a couple of seconds and let people who want to move on. We're gonna, the Encore Amendment discussion is next, but I see a lot of people want to bail, so finish your wrapping and whatnot. Chris, we'll take a short intermission. Just take five. Thank you. Okay, we're back. Thank you very much. The next item is the continuation of the Encore Development Amendment. We had some questions last, last week. Dan, do you have that for us?
I think the only question the board had was the, they wanted a solid estimate for the waterline work, which we went back to the engineer and asked for them to give us a, an estimate, a conservative estimate. I think everyone had included in their packet that the estimate.
Dan, could you give just a little closer to the microphone?
Okay. Okay, so the board had asked for an estimate of, for the waterline project that would, that would be a part of the solar project. We went back to our engineer. He did what he considers a conservative estimate. That means that it has a lot of, it's, it's what he would expect it to cost on the high side. And that total was about a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Did you say the number again, Dan? I'm sorry?
Hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. You'll see that he did say that, you know, even with a fifteen percent contingency, which is high on top of that, the total project cost is a hundred and sixteen plus. So, around a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifteen with a fifteen percent contingency figured in. Terry Morse has reviewed it. He believes it's accurate. We've had a couple of contractors look at it, believe that it is reasonable. So, I know you folks had hoped to have that. I hope that answers that question and.
And the amendment addressed a hundred and ten thousand dollars as a cap for Encore?
Yes.
Is that correct?
For Encore and Sun Edison, yes.
Correct, okay.
Any more, any more information on the chance of getting that work done if we go through with this by the folks who are doing the water tower open?
We won't, well, we won't know for sure because we'd have to, once, we have to bid out the waterline project and then go to them for a change order or additional work. So we wouldn't know for sure, but if, if that did happen, this number would be significantly reduced. This is as if it would bid as an individual project, just to be clear. We could significantly reduce this if we were to do an add-on for someone who has mobilized already in the area to do that exact type of work.
Dan, can I ask a, because there was a question raised last week by somebody in the area about river access. I drove up by there myself this week. It looks to me like the river access is gonna remain open, but not to vehicle traffic, correct?
There would be no impact to the river access. And there was a question raised about the, the restriction for vehicle access. That right away, I was confirmed by RJ, is that actually is owned by the state of Vermont and they require it to be restricted from vehicle access. So, that's not anything the town has control of. We might be able to convince them if we thought it was a good idea. I'm not so sure it is to allow vehicles to drive right down to the river. But RJ was very clear that those rocks were put there at the direction of the state of Vermont.
But there's pedestrian access is still.
Pedestrian access will remain completely unrestricted even on, on the parcel that the, the solar farm would be located upon.
Tom, did you, you had some questions?
No, I think that was my concern, question that the contract vendor, or the contract party pick up the responsibility and there's certainly enough there to make that happen. I don't see any reason not to proceed with the amendment.
They, they had, they had said one, one ten it was capped at and one sixteen was a possible very high end number?
Well, one oh one is a conservative estimate, but, you know, let's, for instance, which is extremely unlikely if they were to hit ledge, which we know it's not there because it's all fill. Engineers like to be very, very, very conservative, but, you know, that's at the absolute high end is the hundred and sixteen. They believe that a hundred and one is much more reasonable, even at a conservative estimate. And if we can work with the contractor that's gonna be doing the tower project, again, we could be significantly lower.
Fifteen percent contingency is the same we use for building construction and anything that, that matters. I mean, it seems like a fairly healthy contingency.
Right. Can you ask a question, Dan? In terms of the contingency, a hundred and one thousand, fifteen percent contingency, if, if the project has to go over a hundred and one thousand, does Encore come back to us and say, I need to use the contingency, I need your authorization? Or will they just go ahead and do it?
No, they're, just to be clear, they're, they have offered a hundred and ten thousand dollars towards the project. That's their cap. They need to have a cap in order to get their financing.
Gotcha.
And I did, again, I've talked to Terry and our engineer and they feel very comfortable with these numbers.
I guess the way I feel about this is it's, it's not our project and I'm not, I mean, we're not looking to really have any gains here monetarily. So, do they seem opposed to striking a cap? I mean, this is part of their project, but they have to put together to make this work, so.
They're, they're saying that the number, the upfront numbers, this is about maximum for them to do the project. But you have to remember, we're going to be making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of guaranteed income over the course of it, as well as anywhere from five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings and electricity costs. So, I mean, a difference of a few thousand dollars for a million dollar deal is fairly, fairly small, I would think, as far as the benefit.
For them as well, though. I would assume they're making some money on this project.
But again, they have to finance it upfront and that's, that's what they're looking at.
But, but I would add to that, that we, we haven't actually approached them about that number, the new number. And that's something that we can do if the board desires, that we at least ask the question.
I have asked the question, just to be clear. This is their offer.
Very good. Thank you, Dan.
Could we, could we address it so that it basically, is they're contributing a hundred and ten thousand dollars? And they might win a little bit and we might win a little bit and not play the game back and forth, you know? Rather than say it's up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. It, it is really our project that they're doing for us and I just assume they, they make the contribution of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I, I think that.
Well, we don't want them to control the, the faucet, is what.
I think that's perfectly, a perfectly appropriate issue. I don't know if we should discuss that in open session as it's a, kind of a negotiation point unless it's like the.
I don't, I don't, you know, I don't care if it goes.
I think there's a number of things in here where we're talking about the contract specifically and maybe it isn't appropriate to be.
My feeling is that's it, you know, I'm, you know, we're, this is not a negotiation in or out of executive session. My feeling is that that's what we go to them and say, here's what we do. And we're gonna have to come out and vote on it anyway. So, why don't we just cut to the chase and say yes or no? And if the board wants to go back to them, you know, the majority, that's fine. I just would like to cut this discussion to a.
Do, do you want to make a motion to that? In fact, would that be, that'd be the way to make, you'd have to make a motion to change our, our contractual offer, I would think.
No, it's their, theirs, theirs. They came to us. So, our response is that they will absorb an additional hundred and ten thousand dollars for the remediation or the improvement to that water line.
And I think, just to be clear, just so I understand, is they will contribute a hundred and ten thousand dollars to the project. Whether or not we use it all is, is not, is irrelevant. If we bring it in under a hundred and ten, great. If it goes to a hundred and twelve, then that's our problem. Certainly, that's understandable.
So, with the hundred and one estimate, you're saying we would just pocket the nine?
Well, it could work both ways.
No, no, I, no, I understand, but that's, that's the, that's the standing that.
That's what I'm saying, is that we both take the risk.
Is that, is that the, is that what's on the table?
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion.
A little discussion on that. I'm, I'm a little unclear about that.
What's on the table now is up to a hundred and ten. So that's why we bid it.
So if it came in, so reasonably, if, if we had it done and the bill came in at eighty-six thousand dollars.
That's what we would get.
That's what we would charge, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're.
Right, so instead of.
Is that what you're saying, Tom?
We're not gonna take the extra.
No, we are taking the extra. They are gonna give us a hundred and ten thousand dollars and we're gonna program manage.
That's a contribution towards this project. It goes towards a total amortization over the entire period of the contract, which just happens to be a little more upfront money than they may have planned.
And I, and just to, I think that's completely within their comfort zone because they just need a number that they can go to the bank and say, here's our ultimate risk. And if, if they're gonna give a hundred and ten right up front, I, I think we can get them comfortable with that.
Okay. Who, who, Dan, before you go away, who ultimately is writing the check for the prod, the construction project, for the watering line? Are they writing the check or are we writing the check at the end of the day?
Their, it's their cost, their contribution. Yeah, we, they want us to bid and oversee the project, but they'll pay for it.
Right.
And it's our water line, so we would have to oversee it anyway, so.
Right, right. Okay.
One, one other question I had, just in respect to the decontamination. I don't see us requiring that as, as really, we're talking about a land lease deal. But am I correct in understanding that the Public Service Board requires a plan for decontamination at the end of this period?
Decommission.
Decommission, excuse me.
Well, we, we don't, we don't necessarily have like a, a detailed plan, but because this is such a simple project, in the lease, it says that they are one hundred percent responsible for removal of all equipment before the end, at the end of the lease.
Yeah, it's, it's true, yeah. It's a specific amendment, though.
Yes, this is just that basically it's counter to their offer and that they contribute a hundred and ten thousand dollars towards the cost of relocation of that water line. And if we can bring it in for something less, then fine. If we have to spend more of our reserve on that, then we deal with it accordingly. But based upon what Terry has shared, it's probably gonna be well within that context.
Any other discussion on that point?
I don't know.
Okay, John, any? All right, we have a motion on the floor to ask Encore to contribute a hundred and ten thousand dollars towards the moving of the water line.
But otherwise, their proposal is as written. You're, you're accepting the rest of their proposal?
No, 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 that's the specific line in the discussion. Let's just do that as a line item for right now.
Okay, sorry.
All right, all in favor of that? All right, that's unanimous. Okay, so, does anyone have any issues with the rest of, with any of the other parts of the amendment? Or any, okay.
I would make the motion at this point to, to approve the rest of their proposal as amended.
Okay. We have a second, we have a second. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I actually would like to see, or have a better understanding of where the, the eighteen cents comes into play. I know I was looking at the numbers based on, you know, residential use and the cost there. I'm assuming we're buying the energy directly from them. They're not selling it to a provider and then we're.
Actually, we get a direct credit from Green Mountain Power based on how much energy is permitted.
So we get the credit from Green Mountain Power for the eighteen cents because they're drawing from that system?
There will be a meter on the system. Whatever that meter shows is the amount of power produced. We'll get a credit and then, and we'll, we'll pay to them amount of that credit less two cents. And then over time, that amount between the, the value of the credit and what we pay will continue to get higher because our payment for the credit is fixed throughout the twenty-five year period. Any increase in cost will benefit us because we don't have to pay more for the credit. So the credit floats with the market, the value of the credit to us, but the value we pay to them is fixed.
I'm sorry, so.
So for example, for example, right now, it's about nineteen cents that the credit is worth.
Right.
And we're gonna pay, I forget what the amount is, seventeen or something cents. So that difference is, we take the benefit of. Now, the value of that credit over time is going to naturally increase because as electricity prices go up, the, the value will go up. But we will never pay more than our fixed cost that we have agreed to pay to them. So our, we don't, we don't float with the market, the value of the credit does.
Okay, so you're saying that what we're paying per kilowatt hour is going to stay flat?
Yes.
As the.
It actually is flat and then it drops after ten years because of the solar adder disappears, which is four cents. So we pay four cents less after that solar adder disappears to make sure that we never have to pay more for what.
Well, that doesn't make sense, though, because you could either have the flat rate or you could have an eighteen cent discount, right?
Well, what it does, it does make sense because right now you're getting, the, the state of Vermont is authorizing a four cents additional cost for that kilowatt hour that we'll get credit for. Once that disappears, then we won't get that credit anymore. We won't get that four cents additional credit, so we have to drop down what we pay for it by a certain amount.
And, and how was that eighteen cents determined by Green Mountain Power? I tried calling them and.
Yeah, Green Mountain Power figures it based on the current residential rate plus the solar adder. And that's fixed. And then, over time, that current residential, that residential rate will more than likely increase. It never has significantly decreased. They're, they're proposing, they're showing a little bit over three percent increase in our, the figures, the seven and fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is based on a two point five percent increase over time.
I understand what you're saying. So you're saying that we're paying eighteen cents per kilowatt hour?
Right. But we get a credit for more than that on our bill? We're paying, we're paying for a credit, we're paying for a credit that's worth twenty cents, we're only paying eighteen cents.
Why is it worth twenty cents? So if the.
That's what the state says it's worth.
If the residential rate currently is fourteen cents.
Right.
And we're going to be paying eighteen cents?
I'm, I don't know what the exact numbers are. I, I just know that it's a four cents differential because of the solar adder.
Again, the solar adder means?
It means that the credit is for, is, we're giving credit four cents more than what the credit is actually worth in the market. It's a subsidy by the state of Vermont.
Okay.
So, what happens is we get a little bit of that and so does the developer get a little bit of that benefit.
If you look at the amendment and you look in the regulatory update, it talks about the solar adder.
Well, that's, that's where I'm at, but I just, I mean, to say that our, okay, I, I guess I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with that. Do you guys understand this more? Would you be able to give me a clearer understanding of, of why we go from a fourteen cent to an eighteen cent with a, with a kickback of four cents? Is that what we're saying? So we go from?
It's not a kickback, here, okay. I guess I can explain it. Let's say everybody pays fourteen cents for power. Let's just say that's the base rate.
Right.
Okay. State of Vermont is saying if you enter into a net meeting agreement with a renewable energy solar project, we'll give you a, we'll increase the amount that that credit is worth by four cents. So, we could just do this project and pay fourteen cents for the, for the power and we would break even, a lot like, like we're doing with the hydro project. And it's a good thing because it's renewable, but we're not really getting a benefit from that because the credit is worth exactly what we're paying for it. In this particular case, we are guaranteed, at least for the first ten years, that our, that that credit will be worth more, more than what we're paying for it. So, we're getting a credit for, I'm just gonna use round numbers, for twenty cents, but we're only paying eighteen cents for it. Does that make sense?
Two, right? Two cents?
Two cents.
Two cents off. Yeah, I think you're, you're thinking of it as a discount versus a credit.
It's not really dollars and cents, it's, it's credit.
So we're getting two cents per kilo, kilowatt hour that we use, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we're benefiting in the first instance about two cents per kilowatt hour. That will, that will likely increase significantly over the life of the project. Because we'll never pay, we're paying a fixed amount for a credit that will increase over time.
Okay, and do we have an understanding of what, if we weren't, I mean, we're, we're partnering up with this, this group and Green Mountain Power, it's a three-way agreement, correct?
Yeah, but Green Mountain Power's, their, their role is set by statute, so it's not really, we don't have to negotiate with Green Mountain Power at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I'm asking these questions, I'm wondering if there's any additional negotiation that could be done with Encore, but it sounds like our agreements are all through Green Mountain, it's not through the group that's actually doing the project?
Well, negotiation with, is with Encore and Sun Edison, we, they have to, we have to negotiate with them how much we're willing to pay for that credit. What's the discount?
So they would have to contribute more towards this credit if we, right now, are they contributing towards that credit?
Right now, they're paying for the project and producing the power.
Right.
And we're paying for that, that power that they're producing.
Is there another way of saying is that they're actually guaranteeing us that we're going to get that spread for 10 years?
Yes.
And notwithstanding where rates go, if it goes higher, we're still going to be paying, but that, that's where that difference for that 10-year period, that's the only thing they're guaranteeing for the whole length of the project?
Well, what there, there's two things, they're guaranteeing the lease payment, $10,000 a year, and then, we are entering into agreement for a fixed payment for the credit for 10 years, and then it will drop, because the solar adder, which is the four cent additional subsidization that the state is now authorizing, disappears. So, if we stayed even throughout the time without dropping, then we would see a detriment to ourselves. But we're not, we're going to drop down the amount of the solar adder, so that, so that there will always be that cushion, or likely even a large cushion, between what we're paying for the credit and what that credit is worth.
Dan, what's, talk a little bit about the motivation behind the state creating the subsidy program for this?
Boy, it's hard for me to, but I assume it's most likely to encourage renewable energy. Yeah, and there are lots of other perhaps reasons, but that's the core reason.
The state has set a goal for renewable energy by, you know, in different years, and a percentage of our energy.
With the idea behind that being the costs of our current sources of energy are ever, ever rising, correct?
Yes.
I mean, and this is, this could be a fairly stable energy source, and a fairly stable amount, that right now may be slightly more expensive, I guess, in totality, but...
Right. The nice thing about solar power is that, once you pay the upfront costs, assuming no cataclysmic changes, the sun shines, electricity gets produced, it isn't necessarily affected by wars in the Arab countries and fracking and all of it.
Historically, and you may remember the discussions about the old contract with Vermont, with Hydro Quebec, where we, in the state, paid really, really unusually high electric rates for a long time. Several years back, that, that ended, but there had been a call for a long time to become more independent on our electricity. And then, the more recent, you know, goals that the legislature has set for, for renewable energy, they've gotten these subsidies to try and develop this technology and move forward with it, so.
On that subsidy question, that's, this is the 10-year program, right? Have the state renewed that subsidy program under the contract, do you recall?
Then, we would have to, then the contract would be adjusted to, so that there's the same, it was essentially the same benefit for all parties. Which, interesting enough, what we're talking about here is, as far as the price adjustment, because they dropped the solar adder by a couple cents, that's already contemplated in the contract, that that would be adjusted, so that's really not a change, so much as this acknowledgement that there has been a change in the regulatory situation, so the contract would automatically adjust if...
To the post-solar adder quotient.
Yeah, so, all that's kind of contemplated in here, what wasn't contemplated was the water line and the five-year extension.
Okay. And do you have an understanding of what the sell-back rate is for Encore to Green Mountain? Is that in the five or six cent range, or whatever the credit is?
I don't, I don't, I don't know what the sell-back, I don't know what you mean by sell-back rate, but I mean...
So they're, they're going to be selling this energy to Green Mountain, is that the understanding?
Yeah, they, they get it for that, it'll be fixed at that residential rate.
Okay, so they'll be, anything that they harvest...
Plus the four cents solar adder, so, they make some money, too.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor? Any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous, Lynda, so the amendment has been accepted. Thank you, Dan.
As amended.
As amended. Okay. The next item is a charter change ballot question, it was brought up several weeks ago by Mike Bethel. Let me read that. Let me see where I have that. Here it is. I'll read that again, so we can continue the discussion. Bennington Charter could be amended to add 103-105 as follows. Referendum, voters equal to 5% of the checklist may petition a select board within 30 days of any vote of the board to require a public vote to disapprove the decision of the board. Upon receipt of the petition, the board shall warn a vote by Australian ballot within 60 days of the date of the receipt of the petition. Being notwithstanding any other provision of law, the select board may refer any decision it would otherwise make to a vote of the town, upon proper notice and warning, and the decision of a majority of the voters shall constitute binding action on part of the town. C, this section shall not apply to emergencies where the public health, safety, and welfare is at risk, such discussions shall be binding upon the vote of the select board. Note, this proposal is intended to restore the original delegated power of the electorate given to the select board by the voters on issues which engender strong public reaction. This is a method available to voters in the adoption of ordinances in the sale of public property and general municipal law. Referendum is also available to Brattleboro voters by the town charter for all actions taken by towns' representatives at town meeting. So I just want to clarify, I went back, the Brattleboro issue is, Brattleboro has elected town representatives, similar to electoral college, that on town meeting decide on, on issues. And there is an opportunity for those representatives, or a percentage, an identified percentage of the public, to call for a vote on a specific topic, if, if, if it's voted one way and you get enough signatures, or to go the other way. It is not something that exists for their, their week-to-week select board meetings. Okay, so, we've had a few weeks to look at this. John, do you want to start conversation on this?
Um, I don't want to start the conversation on this.
That's fine.
I'll start the conversation.
Go ahead, Justin.
I'm slightly intrigued by the idea, because I think it gives the public an opportunity to weigh in a little bit further on decisive issues that the board has had to already weigh in on. I don't think it's something that would be used and abused to the degree where it would hamstring any decision us or any future select board would make, because I think it's a pretty cumbersome burden, burden to achieve the referendum, you know, the required signatures and the amount of time to have the referendum. So I think it would be used in a fashion that would, you know, be beneficial, actually, to be, go in the direction of what the townspeople want, as opposed to maybe often something to the opposite way. So I'm intrigued by it, I'd like to see it go to the voters. A charter change has to be approved by the voters before the legislature, and we would have to approve it anyhow. If the people didn't support it, they would have the opportunity to vote it down in March, so, I think, at this point, it's, it's something I would support to go forward with. I'm curious to see what other folks have to say, but I don't see any harm in putting some more power to the people, if they feel disenfranchised by a decision we've made. We are here to represent them.
Jim?
Currently, as a charter exists, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't the general population available, or isn't it allowed by the general population if they want a change that, well, the standard operating procedure is, you know, you gather the signature and then it becomes a ballot measure? Is that correct?
For advisories.
Oh, for advisories.
Advisory capacities.
Right, but, or with ordinances, ordinances and budgetary items, I believe, they have that power, is that correct, Stuart?
That's true, but they can also petition for a charter change. The deadlines for that petition to come before the board are substantially different than they would be for petitioned articles for money or other advisory votes. Obviously, the length of time and the warning, for instance, in this particular case, we would have to warn this no later than January 2nd of 2015. So, if people were to petition for this, and present a petition to the board, it would have to have arrived before this board sometime in December.
Okay. Sharon, do you have any, anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think if we do move forward with this, we have to be very careful on the wording that we put in for the charter change, or how we, I don't know, I mean, we do have a say in what it says, is that correct, Stuart?
At this point, you could...
Yeah, I just don't think, we can't just put it out there that they can vote on whatever they want. You know, I'm kind of torn, I, I would tend not to be in favor of this at this point in time. I don't know, I just, I'm just wondering how the citizens are going to approach this. I mean, I can see some people, and I'll say, Mike Bethel is one of them, that wants to put everything before a vote, he wants the citizens to vote for everything, so I can see where it could be abused.
Michael?
Determining, I've given this some thought, determining what a controversial issue is can be pretty subjective, can often be who is banging the loudest drum, or who has the loudest mouth, at the same time as giving short shrift to reasoned and factual statements. And I think we saw that in the, in the recent Shires Housing set of debates. So I'm not in favor of it, I think it's such a proposal, basically seems to focus on the flavor of the month, and on rethinking decisions that may in fact be in the long-term best interest of the town and its citizens. As such, I think it's always going to be a one-issue approach, and I think we are here to do more than one issue, we're here to be looking at the whole of the town, and all of the, all of the, all of the issues that we're faced. You start focusing on one issue here and there that disguises a, a segment of the people, and you're really not governing. What are we here to do, except to govern and make decisions? We'll make decisions, and when people don't like them, and that's their freedom to do, then they can vote us out.
Thomas?
Yeah, I, you know, I heard someone talk about representative democracy this evening, and personally, as a board member, I think I would be abrogating the responsibility that I was given when I was voted to this job. So, I'm going to make mistakes, and I expect to be held accountable by the majority, and I think that's how we respond in this model, form of government. If we want to change the, the model, I think there's another way to do it, and it's not with this way. I think this is sort of a backdoor approach to undercutting the representative democracy that we have in this model. So I'm opposed to it.
Okay. I won't beat around the bush, I'm dead-set against it. I've prepared, I've done some studying and some reading around, and this is what I've come up with, is that an amendment to the town charter to abdicate the select board of its duties to make the final decision on basic town business would be detrimental to the progress of the town in general. Many larger issues that involve taxation, ordinances, and charter changes must be decided by the voters. Escalate all issues to this level would be a mistake on several fronts. The foremost reason is the issue of democracy. The select board represents all of the citizens of town, not just the taxpayers, voters, or business owners. The rights of all of the individuals must be weighed in many decisions in the legislative body. At the time, some decisions are made, they may not be popular, but they may be legally correct or constitutionally proper decisions. Often in these cases, public opinion could disagree. Democracy is not served simply by a majority vote, but in giving equal weight to the rights of all citizens. Many times, the select board is asked for its support of contractual negotiations in executive session. This can go on for years before a contract is signed, and can cost the town and private investors a lot of money. Those investors count on the authority of the board to stand by their support. Dealing with a town board that cannot provide that support would make future development extremely risky. Lastly, the duties of the select board are clear, and most voters expect the board to perform the due diligence to understand the issues and make decisions. To abdicate that duty and pass any involved issue to a vote would not only be a waste of taxpayer dollars, it would be a dereliction of the basic duties of an electorate body. So that's how I feel.
If anybody cares to make a motion, we could, we could see if you want to push it further.
I'd like to just say, one last thing.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, I like to listen before I speak.
Sure, go ahead.
So when this first came, came about, you know, a lot, a lot of thought has to go into making these types of changes, and I think initially, I was probably inclined, and, and maybe that was just because of recent decisions that were made, and, and the majority, and the abundance of people that came, came in overwhelmingly to be turned away. And so I, I'm trying to push that aside, and think Michael hit the nail on the head when he said, we're, we're up here to represent, we're up here to, to help the entire community, and at the end of the day, if there's something that you don't like, you have the opportunity to vote us out. And I, I, just, just like you were saying, Greg, when, if, if we were to wait and put this into, into play, then a project might be lost by the time it comes to vote. I mean, we, we could be making a decision in April, and then have to wait an entire year to put it to vote, and then all of a sudden lose the project, good or bad. And so that could be detrimental to moving us forward. So in that regard, it's, it's not, it wouldn't be beneficial, but at the end of the day...
How do you, where do you come up with the year, though? How do you see it?
Well, I mean, I guess we could, we could gather a new vote, or set a new voting day.
Right. The way it's presented, you would have 30 days.
You'd be talking about special Australian ballots, right? Special election days for, for individual points would be one of the options in this. Yeah, you wouldn't necessarily be mating for town meeting day, you could theoretically have a vote in August, or...
Well, and then, I guess the other question that would have to be thrown into this discussion at some point, is the cost associated with, with doing this.
Certainly.
On a regular basis, or a not-so-regular basis, and, and to not have those numbers available, I don't know if you do, Stu, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Right, off the top of my head.
But to, to, one, validate, are we talking about 500 signatures?
Talking about 500 signatures to put it before the voters.
But they have to be accounted for, we have to have someone that, that checks off every single, single signature. They might have to do it multiple times, so there's, there's costs associated with that, this, not to mention the costs associated with voting as well. Again, I have no idea what those numbers are.
Well, the March election generally runs in, in the range of $3,000 to $4,000, depending on the number of questions on the ballot, because there's a programming cost to, to put those questions into the tabulating machines, so that it can tabulate them properly. There's the cost of the people who actually operate the polls, as you know, we, we do provide food for them, and, and John is right, there's the initial upfront cost of time that the town clerk must spend reviewing the petitions to make sure that the signatures are in fact ballot, before it can be placed.
And, and I guess the last point that I would have is, I'm all in favor for listening to the people, it's why, actually, last, last meeting when we were talking about the tax vote cut, I know it was brought up earlier by a citizen, my vote was against it completely, until I heard that it was going into the citizens' hands, and I, I mean, you might agree with that, you might not agree with that, but come time to vote, I will be voting against that, but I think it's fair to allow the people to have a say in it as well. I know it's the minority that, that we're affecting here, or the majority of the taxpayers. But anyway, to come back to, to the topic at hand, the issue, we all know what issue we're talking about, there's over 1,000 signatures, looking back at all of us being elected here, in most cases, it took less to get us here, and if, if you're not a fan of the way someone voted, like Michael said, vote them out.
You know, I, I, and I think you're right, but there's another issue in, in this particular case, that particular case of the Shires Housing project, is in a sense, the trigger to this. And frankly, that project, as we have heard, can go ahead without anything that we voted on. If we didn't act as a conduit for that $700,000, that project would still go ahead, so...
I don't, I don't...
This, to me, is a tempest in a teacup.
It's kind of a knee-jerk reaction to what happened.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
I don't find, I don't think that comment's true, Michael, I think if they didn't need the money, they wouldn't have been asking for it. But, you know, that's neither here nor there. This did come as a, as a conduit of, of 1,000 people asking this board to go in one direction, and this board not being responsive for that. So I think for folks to come up here and ask for a way, for some, you know, some way for their voice to be heard, when clearly it wasn't, is not a knee-jerk reaction, it's, it's something I would respect.
Well, I wouldn't say their voice wasn't heard, I would say that I disagree with the premise of the arguments, you know, I mean, there were, there were 1,000 signatures, a lot of people who had told me afterwards, they, they did not support the opposition anymore. But there's also the arguments, I found the arguments contradictory, you know, and against it, and the statement on the ballot, or the statement on the petition was just a statement, it wasn't even a call to action. You know, the, once you got past that, there was a lot of disagreement, and I think that's exactly when you get to a situation where the board needs to take responsibility for the decisions. You know, I'll stand by that decision, and I can explain it, I've explained it 1,000 times, but that's where you have to stand by your decision, I think. And, you know, you do it, you don't back down from a decision when you're in a dissension, you know, and, and I respect that. But I don't think this ca, this furthers the cause of the town to, to, to put this charter thing through, certainly not the way it's written.
I don't think you back down from your decision either, but I think when there's, there's something that's clear as that, from the people that represented us to represent them, and that didn't happen, that's where people feel like they've been disenfranchised.
I, you know, agree with Justin, but, you know, that's still like a one issue, and this is a much broader response that needs to be. I think it goes back to, are we really being responsive to the entire community, 1,000 people or so, or 1,500? Frankly, we've, we've got 15,000 people here that we've responded to. They may not all vote, they can't vote, because they're minors as well, but, you know, are we being responsive? And the way that they determine that we are or aren't is, you know, in March. And I just don't think that this is helpful to get the message across to the board, and I don't think it will. And I think what John is saying is true, you could have a project that developer or otherwise comes forward with, and we make a deliberated, deliberated decision, and it's going to be second-guessed by 5%, and all of a sudden, we have no project. I just think we're putting something that doesn't need to be in play under our system.
That's an additional item, I think everybody would expect that each one of us would vote his or her conscience.
I mean, I, well, I think that's an interpretation of, of each select board member, too, I mean, some people run for office to, to represent the most popular opinion in their, in their constituency, some people run for office to vote their conscience or their agenda, you know, that's something that is left up...
Not agenda, agenda is different from conscience.
Well, I mean, but there are people who, who do that, you know, I mean, there are people who get into politics or get into office to push an agenda, they might even, they could, you know, there's one-issue politicians out there, they vote just to push one thing, so, that is an individual choice. one thing, so, that is an individual choice, it's, I mean, the popularity of a, of an issue, to me, is secondary to the importance of the issue and, and what's the correct decision going forward, and that's not always going to make everybody happy, but, you know, there's people that may completely disagree with that. But to me, it's, it's reminiscent, to use a sports analogy, of, you know, the NFL going videotape and just calling everything a fumble, and going to, going to video on it, you know, at some point, you have to make a decision, you know, to keep things moving forward, and I think that's what we do. So. I mean, certainly, as written, I think it's, it's poorly written, and that's rather vague, and, and I do think that some of these elements exist on the larger, you know, on the larger issues. Alright, so, do we have any motions?
We need a motion.
For this, or? Table it? Alrighty, thank you, next item is the manager's report.
Yes, very, very quickly, we've talked about this, at least at a couple of meetings now, we're requesting that the board approve the proposed increase in fees to use this facility for nonprofit and volunteer groups, fire department members continue to be able to use it free. What is your pleasure? We've explained it, the costs for us keep increasing as paper products increase, as pots and pan costs increase, and I think if we're always going to be relying on the taxpayers to continue to subsidize the groups who use this, then I think we're, we're actually doing the wrong thing, and I think this at least goes to having the people who use it pay to use it.
I'll make a motion to go forward with the policy changes as a review is presented.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
I believe the conversation last time was the distinction between the nonprofits and the club.
And the LLCs.
Volunteer group.
The only question I have, Stu, is that going to be a challenge, or is it a challenge to try to differentiate between the, the not-for-profit 501(c)(3)'s and the both volunteers? Because it seems to me they're all in the same.
It really, it hasn't been an issue, the Chief of Police and his administrative assistant oversee the permit process, it's very clear when people come in to use the facility, where they fall, whether it's a volunteer group or a nonprofit, and usually, the, the volunteer groups are the, the Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts, those folks who, who fundraise for an event but don't support themselves otherwise by fundraising or grants, and that's really the difference, they're not incorporated as a 501 organization, so it's not been, it's not been a problem in the past.
We don't want to create a problem where there isn't one, we're just giving more discretion to the, the chief to make sure that the, the right people get the right pricing, and I guess I'm comfortable with it.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that is unanimous.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
The second issue is really one that we would circulate the, the signature sheet for you, you received in your pack and an explanation of what it is, it's basically when Route 279 North was built, the state of Vermont took easements on a portion of roads that are within the town's purview, they are East Road, East Main Street, Harvard Street, Hickory Hill, Linden Street, Chapel Road, and an unnamed Penn Road, which runs off of Chapel Road. All of those easements had to be altered, roads were altered, the project is now completed, and the state wishes to relinquish their easements and turn them back to our control, obviously, we've been maintaining them all along, this just formalizes the process, and I would circulate this for your signatures.
Stu, have we seen any issues up there since the completion of the highway? I've heard stories of drainage issues and things, changing water flows and whatnot.
Not particularly, initially, when the, the highway was under construction, we did have some drainage problems where it seemed that the, the drainage ways that came underneath the highway were inadequately designed to handle the amount of water that was actually coming down through. We think we've pretty much resolved those questions. Now, in torrential rainstorms, there are going to be problems there, there always actually have been problems in the past, perhaps not as severe, but on, on this, on the standard storm, the state has made changes to the retention ponds and the design of those ponds, they've worked with one landowner to make sure that there was sufficient drainage way through his property to control that runoff, so it didn't get down into the backyards and front yards of the people along Branch Street, and I think we've pretty much resolved that problem.
Okay, thank you.
When it, when it was under state jurisdictions, you were saying that we were still maintaining it?
Yeah, we maintain, we maintain the local roads, all of these roads were adjusted somewhat, for instance, sidewalk was constructed along East Main Street, where it didn't exist before, East Road was actually an underpass, was built under East Road, they needed to, they needed access to our right-of-way in order to do that, they didn't really adjust the roadways themselves, but they added improvements or changes in elevation or location of curbing and related drainage structures, so that the project would fit and perform as it was designed, and not put us at risk.
Stu? Stuart, this document, it has to get notarized before it's finished, is it?
Uh, yes, it would be, basically, the town clerk will, will notarize, I will swear that I have viewed your signatures, I'm also a noted republic, so I could in fact notarize your signatures.
It's going to be notarized in Bennington?
Yes.
Might want to change the last line over here.
Yes, I, I noticed that myself, and we'll, we'll make that Bennington.
We want to go.
You just cross it out and put Bennington.
Okay, thank you, Stu.
You're welcome.
And then, next item. Is that it, Stu?
That's it, I'm sorry.
Okay, so then we're, we, so we have executive session we need to go in?
Yes, I do have one real estate item, and Mike's got a couple of contracts.
Oh, yeah, we can do other business, thank you, I'm, this, the thing goes right into the next part, so I'm trying to find the break.
Are you going to ask for comments or questions?
Um, yeah, and you have any other business?
I'd like to get on the agenda the issue of the four percent penalty, a motion that I made two weeks ago, sometimes, you know, this, talk about accountability, I started to look at it myself, in the context of, was this the appropriate thing to do as far as review and making the motion, I think I made it in the spirit of cooperation, but this is something that really needs to be looked at further, and I say that because since then, I've gotten some feedback, and also some research that has been done around the state, and it's to other towns, and I can share that with you. If we could just have an agenda item, it may stay exactly as it is, the only concern I have is, will that be problematic if we, we visit and move or deal with the issue at the next meeting, Stu?
Uh, we, we have, we have time, the warning does not need to be signed until the second meeting in January, so we have plenty of time.
So we could make, we could have a discussion if you wanted to withdraw your motion, there's a process to that, if not, leave well enough.
I'll, I'll share with you, the chair, and we have that, and, as I say, sometimes, in the spirit of the discussion, I think sometimes a motion is made too quickly and persuasively because of our own paying our taxes on time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Michael?
Yeah, obviously, tonight's been a full agenda, between now and our next meeting, I will send to all of you the, the final draft, if you will, of the town manager performance appraisal form and the job description, so that we can take that up at the beginning of the year. The other thing I want to mention is that, as some of you know, and I think we invited all of you, Tom Jacobs, myself, Dan Monks, Mike Harrington, Joanne Aaron House, Mike McDonough, and John Shanahan spent a very valuable day with the city development team in St. Albans last Friday, the 12th, seeing exactly what and how the city is doing to, to invoke and to carry out some real downtown renewal, add jobs, and, and make, make the town more pleasant, if you will, but also more attractive to businesses and more attractive to visitors, at the right time, we're happy to discuss that with everybody, and at the right time, if we'd like that, Dom Cloud and his team from St. Albans could come down here and tell us about how they went about doing what they've done.
Thank you, Michael, thanks to everyone who went up on that trip, I couldn't make that, but it sounded like it was pretty exciting. Sharon?
Yeah, unfortunately, I couldn't make that either, as we were going out of town, but it did sound pretty exciting.
It was good, it was very revealing about what's going on.
Good, I have nothing other than to wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe and prosperous New Year.
Thank you. James?
What Sharon said.
Justin?
Merry Christmas.
Tiana?
All set.
Okay, yeah, we're drawing to the end of Hanukkah, and when, Christmas on Thursday, everybody gets to see the folks they want to see, and safe travels, so we are going to go into executive session, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, second, any discussion? All in favor? Alright, we have contracts and real estate to discuss. Thank you, everyone.